I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order.
I'm turning my camera.
Mr. Smoyer will be leading off with his presentation from the McCarthy School.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First language not English, 7.9 percent. We're coming up a little bit every year. District average is 10, percentage of state is 20. Limited English proficient, 5.1, 6.8. Low income, this low income is a little bit skewed because it also counts preschool students in that number. So actually K to 5 students, we're actually a little bit higher than that. Okay? And we've noticed that the last couple of years, the kids coming into kindergarten, it's been almost 50 percent. So that's where we're heading.
Is that microphone working right?
I have no idea.
It doesn't sound.
Do the tab. There you go now.
I've got to talk. There we go. All right. Special education, that number does include preschool. Okay? That's the way that they do it because we do have the integrated preschool for the city. So there are a number of students in there with special education. Although our number's K to 5 is about 21 to 22 percent. So it's closer to the state average. Open enrollment is 11.5, which is 28 students. And school choice is 4.1 percent. That's 10 students. Next year, looks like, this year we did add a kindergarten classroom to the McCarthy School. So we have three kindergarten classes currently. And our estimate is that will probably be needed for next year, although it's just an estimate and it could happen. That kindergarten classroom is with only one open enrolled student. So that, you know, last, the year before that, we had a lot of open enrolled students. So it looked like we're going to need three. This year, we cut it down and we have only one open enrolled student. So we still need three classes. And it looks like our numbers may be the same for next year. Everything else is two classes per grade level. Performance data this year, this is the performance data just for, at least the graph part of it, the bar graph that you see, is just for the MCAS we took last year, 2017. As we talked about in the previous presentations, the scaling doesn't quite match up. I'm not sure the state has really reconciled that. I think this year they'll probably be able to reconcile it a little bit better. For instance, you know, is it really advanced? Is advanced going to be the same with the existing paper pencil test or the used to be park, now MCAS 2.0? I think they're probably going to, they said they were going to start kind of over and see where we go. So this year's data should be very interesting. We were pleased that we saw nobody really in the lowest area not meeting expectations or warning for most of ours, including grade five ELA. Same thing for grade five math. I'll go back a little bit. Same thing for that. This is science for our last year. This is exactly the same. So this year, we did have, for 2017, we did have a couple of students, and that equates to two students because that's 6 percent. So we did have two students last year who had a warning. If we look at that, the rest of the numbers are okay. We kind of slid a little bit. We're hoping that with the new science, the FOST science curriculum and the energy and the motivation that that brought to our students, which was tremendous, I've got to say that, they love science. They love science. I think you're going to see a change in that. May not be this year, quite honestly, because this is, you know, the first year that we've used the curriculum and we're trying to really be careful with that and try to learn that system. So maybe this year might not be so great, but I'll be willing to bet you it will pay off really big in the next couple of years. I really do. And the biggest piece of that, of course, is motivation. And I think the students love science. Grade four ELA, again, very low in warning. So we're pretty happy. We were pretty happy with most of our numbers, I've got to tell you. If we felt that if you did use it as advanced proficient needs improvement and warning, we would still be on track for where we were before, which we were at about the 66th percentile in the state. If you scale every, every school from zero to 100, you know, we would be in that 66th percentile area. I think we would still be pretty close to that because we did pretty well. Again, no warning in grade four math. Grade four math has improved tremendously. We had a lot of proficient, not so many, not so many advanced this time, but we looked pretty good there. And that, that 5 percent is two students in grade three ELA. We know what that's all about. And we had no warnings in grade three math. So we, again, we felt good at that. Now, why do I say that? Those red, I liken color red, that really means a lot to us as a school. So even if, maybe if the kids, even if it's a special education student, or it's a kid who's struggling, or a kid who just moved in, that means we need to really provide them extra services. I mean, really give them a lot of help. Math tutoring, that, whatever we can do to help that student do that. So that's a big red flag for our school. So we work really hard on that and also proficient and advanced together. Our strengths, grades three to five students, they scored above the state average for essay and narrative writing. It's really the first time that we've seen that across the board. Grade three was better than 10 percent. Grade four was 8 percent. And grade five was 6 percent. And we just compared that to the state because really there was no other way to really compare because it's the first year that we really did it that way. So we just compared things against the state average. Overall, our student growth percentile is 60 percent for ELA and 54 percent for math. The growth range that they shoot for is anywhere between 40 and 60. That's a typical growth range and we were well within that for those items. For almost every item, as shown by the item by item analysis, the McCarthy School achieved a higher percentage than the state average. That's almost in every question. However, I do want to show you that. So I'm going to go to the website in a minute. So this is the McCarthy School report card, if you look on the DESE website. And so what we looked at, and you can go right over here, you go grade three math, reading, English, Latin, search, you can go all the way down like this, and you can look at each question and how well did McCarthy School do. So in this area, the state is in green, McCarthy School is in, is in gold. Now, we find that very useful as a staff because what we do together in usually October is we go through this for every single test. We take a look at every single item and we see where there's a discrepancy. And of course, there's a couple. And then there's some significant ones. So I wanted to go back. So that's how we do it. We look at it this way. And this is available to every school. Everybody can do it this way. So this is what we do. I'm going to go back to my PowerPoint real quick. Okay? So for instance, so area needed growth, you could pick out each one of these. So in fourth grade, our lowest performance on MCAS was identifying the author's point of view. And I can tell you, I still think we need to work on that, even for this year. So what we did is we identified one of those areas where that was the biggest discrepancy. I mean, we were 55 percent, the state was 82 percent. Most of the other questions, we were even or better than the state. So we were pretty amazed by that. Like, what's up with that? Where does that in the curriculum? So we work on that. So we work on that this year. Okay? We worked on that from October, we're working on that in our, in our school. And you can pull up and that's the reporting category. But I wanted to bring that out is to, that's what we do with MCAS. And we do it this year. We're doing it in October. So hopefully, we've been able to improve a little bit in author's point of view for this year. And I can tell you right now, that's been on the fourth grade and the fifth grade test so far. So we know they're going to do it. Another area here for grade three was identifying a point on a number line. And sometimes it's fractions, sometimes it's decimals with fifth grade, but that's a point where we scored lower, where we were 10 percent below. So again, that's something like, where is that in the curriculum map? Are we doing that all the time? Are we doing that with calendar math? Where does it fit in? How are we doing it? So we're doing that right now. One more area is in geometry lines of symmetry. And we knew this one was going to come up. We didn't get to it in the curriculum map in grade four. The teachers went, oh my gosh, you know, where was that? That was at the end of the curriculum map. But, you know, there was other places to do it. The other places we'd do it was in calendar math, which we're supposed to do every day. And they were doing it every day, but they weren't doing that piece. So yes, our students did not perform well on that, on that test question.
So what do we do about it?
So I want to go into our goals a little bit. Now, that seems to be disconnected. We take those questions and I talk about it a little bit. Where are you going to see them here in the goals? Well, the issue is that our school improvement plan is for next year. Okay? We're doing that this year. But where you will see it is there's areas, and I've kind of highlighted everywhere where you'll see in bold letters, MCAS. That means that we're looking at MCAS, part of our overall, the broad goal is, yes, every year we're going to look at MCAS, we're going to pick out questions like that, we're going to pick out areas where we need to improve, and we're going to improve them. That's kind of that overall goal, how you can use MCAS to help yourself. But more importantly, you need to do that with your benchmark tests. You need to do that with your chapter tests. You need to do that with your little quizzes in class. You need to do that all the time. It's just part of the craft of teaching and do that well. So you'll see those kinds of things embedded in the goals. Okay? Even in, now preschool, I did include some of their goals. They have two goals that's in this presentation. One of them is for social emotional activities that align to the math standards. They're working on that. They have been working on that. They will continue to probably always be working on that. That's a big, big part of what they do. FOST science, this is for pre-K to K to 5. Now, pre-K, you know, the FOST science isn't really perfectly aligned for pre-K. Okay? They're taking a kindergarten set and they're using those activities as much as they can integrate them into their pre-K classrooms. And they're starting that this year. I think every year they'll get more and more about that. Grades K to 5, this is our first year, next year, we're going to do it more with fidelity. We're going to be able to, because we used it the first year, they're going to understand the journal writing aspects of science, they're going to understand the curriculum map a little bit better. We're going to have a better feel for it. I believe very strongly we're going to move along and get a lot of it done. That's really what our goal is talking about, is really being able to do those things. In kindergarten, so I've just put a couple of them up here. So you'll see, in kindergarten, the math and the data that they use, for instance, is the kindergarten math assessment that they use for report cards, that we use movie for screen, that we do that sort of thing. They take a look at it and it's really that whole number sense. And a complete understanding, an addition is putting together and adding and subtraction is like taking apart. That's that underlying concept that they really need to have. Math in Focus does that very well. It gives them the tens place, they understand what tens are, five dots, five dots, that's 10. Okay? If they're going to add three, they're going to say, I need five and five, I'm going to have three more over here. If I'm going to take away three from 10, they're going to actually, the kids actually, they'll cross out three of them and they'll, they'll make sure, oh, that's five, I already recognized that's five, I've got two left, that's seven. That understanding, that math concept at kindergarten is very, very important. I think Math in Focus does a great job of that and builds it up through grade five. In grades one and two, one of the goals, and we thought that was pretty important, is weakness and sight word recognition. That's a pretty constant, ongoing goal, but that's something that we're really working on. In order to do that, they're going to provide, they're going to let them interact with words using multiple modalities, guided reading approach, morning message, daily practice, literacy nights for parents, use of song and poetry, journals, begins, simple annotation, and so on. But the journal piece is important because the journals, they're journaling in science. They do that all the time. Every day they do science. They're opening up a journal and they're writing about science. That's something we didn't do last year. That's great. That's part of their program. ELA and writing grades three and five is really to add those details, being able to go back in the text and add those details is something we always need to continue to work on. Yes, we continue to need to work on that. Math in grades three to five, vocabulary, specific concepts are important, retention of new information presented. And that retention of new information presented is, do we do, are we providing a spiraling curriculum? Are we providing that spiraling? Are we following the curriculum? Are we using our daily calendar math to refresh those concepts of six to eight times they've seen the different types of triangles through the year? Not just teach it once and not see it again for, until the test or until MCAS. You've got to keep doing it over and over and over again. So that's that big spiraling piece. We have a Title I reading program. We now have a Title I math tutor too, which has been, he has been extremely helpful. I'm so grateful for that and for our Title I reading. The biggest thing is that we identify students and we target those students. And we're a whole school now because we have, we have a Title I program for the whole school. It wasn't just targeted students. So what we do is we look at kids who need the assistance and we can provide them using the Title I reading tutor. And also it helps the reading specialists too. We can see more kids and that's extremely helpful. I mean, one of the things we've got to really watch out for is of course, grade three, we really need to be able to get these grade three students on reading grade level by the time they leave grade three. Budget considerations, I didn't put a lot on here, honestly, but the Certica Solutions, they've been able to provide that every year through the central office. That's my data program that we use to look at data like MCAS analysis. We can do it for benchmark testing and end of, end of chapter tests in math in particular. And that's been very, very helpful. I can do the MCAS type analysis for every benchmark test or every chapter test. So it's, it's not just waiting until the spring and see how they do. We can do it right away. We can do it for what they're learning right now. And if there's any missing concepts, they can do that. Funding for an online research-based Tier Two intervention system such as MobiMax. And I think Lacy Beakott from the Burke School talked about that a little bit. They have that. She's convinced me about that. I just recently sat with my PTO and my PTO has agreed to fund this for two years. So we can cross that out because they're going to do it for two years. But I really think as a district, at some point, we should look at something like this for the whole district. And we should, and then we can do a little research. Is MobiMax the best one? There's other ones out there. I was just impressed with this based on the Burke Schools practice on that. So if we wanted to try it, we're going to try it too and see how it works. But I really think in the future, we should really look at something like this. It would really help Tier Two. And it also helps those students when they get home. This particular program, the kids can do it on a phone. They can do it on iPad. They can do that work like that. They don't have to have a computer at home. They don't have to have a Chromebook. Of course, if they have a Chromebook, it's really, really useful. And that's not just math. It's science, it's social studies, it's phonics, it's grammar. There's a whole number of options for them to do and it's awesome. And then I would really like us also to take, our, my school council would really like us to look at foundations for secondary. Right now, we do it for first grade and kindergarten. I really think it would be very helpful to do that. And so again, you're in that $3,400 range and it sounds like, yeah, you could probably do that out of your school budget, but not really. I've got to tell you, we can't, we can't really afford that out of the school budget. Be a little bit more. Maybe someday we can do it, but we haven't really seen a great increase in the, you know, our, the McCarthy School line for operating expenses. We haven't really seen an increase in that in a while. So the $3,000, the $4,000 is tough to do. One of our, obviously, our biggest goal is to improve and to continue to improve school climate. Two things, we do a couple of assessment of students' perception of how they feel at school, what they think about school. So we have, we have a survey that we give mid-time, you know, mid-year and we do take a look at it. We have an exit survey in June. We take a look at that and see how we're doing. And then also, we call ourselves a responsive classroom school. We've done a lot of the training in-house. There's a couple of us who have been trained in responsive classroom. We've bought the materials in the past. So we kind of do our own training. We follow the book, it's called The First Six Weeks of School. We follow those for the first six weeks. It's really a great way to, to get the kids to realize that they're citizens in their own classroom. And it's, and it's super important for that. They feel better, they feel more empowered in their classroom. It's really a great way to go and we've been doing that since I've been here. And I'd like, of course, I'd like to thank everybody, Mayor, Bettencourt, school community members who are here, great superintendent, Dr. Levine, sorry to see you go next year. You've been here for most of the time I've been here. Assistant superintendent, Ms. Bertag, soon to be superintendent, so yay! I used to call her all the time and that was a first year principal, right? Right? I still call her. My colleagues who are here, school council members, teachers, students, parents, and the McCarthy School community members. And thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Smoyer. I do want to tell you, I take your words very seriously when you talk about the programs that you need, like the, the MobiMax, because ever since you started, you've always been spot on when you've discussed those types of programs that are needed in the schools. So I'm glad you brought this up this year too. Thank you. You guys go on. Thank you.
I brought this with me.
Did you? Okay. Just going to see.
The goal is that each presentation is three minutes shorter than the previous.
So, good evening, everyone. 14 years ago, I was a first year principal presenting in Salem and was very excited to do my school improvement plan and had more graphics and slides you've ever seen in your life. And I was going along and thought I was doing a great job and I looked over at the superintendent and he said, "Let's get this thing rolling." So, in that theme, I've got to move through it very quickly, but obviously I'd be happy to answer questions and things, but I respect the time and busy schedule you have, so. So I just, the first slide, Mr. Smoyer had the similar thing with the enrollment. The only thing we had, we were slightly below the district in the high needs categories. So I just got to move quickly on from that. Open enrollment is the only area that we're, almost up to 13 percent. So that's a pretty, when I look at some of these numbers here, I'll show you how that impacts us a little bit. So 2016, you can see the average class size, excuse me, average of the class sizes. 2017, you can see we're in pretty good shape. Grade three, you can see a pretty significant bubble we have. Currently, we have almost 26 students. So we're going to want to look at that going forward to next year. And you can see our projected enrollment that with the current staffing that we have now puts us in a pretty good position. 25, pretty big for the fifth grade, but I think we could handle that. So that's using the same staffing levels that we have now. And if you looked at the slides, they increased about 20, from two years ago, 20 students, 20 more were projected for next year. So we have a growth bubble happening, but we're in pretty good shape given the current staffing. We have to address that. So when I look at the MCAS slides and the next six, seven slides, part of my school improvement plan, we can look at them a little bit. The biggest thing, and I know you've heard this before, so I'm not going to go into it too much, with the new test that we have and the new categories, as you looked at that closely, they do not correlate, the advanced proficient do not correlate with exceeding expectations. And so right away, as you look at MCAS, you want to look at trends in your data. You want to look over a three-year period and where things may happen. So we tried to go back and look at that a little bit to see if at the grade levels or even at the subject levels, first thing we did is we looked at it compared to the state. And so we saw that in the LA in math, third graders were trending slightly below the state averages, while in fourth and fifth grade last year, we were slightly above in some cases, eight or 10 percentage points. So that core instruction you're happy with. After that, we've seen a lot of inconsistencies if you're looking for trends, if you're looking for things where over the last three years in math at a certain grade level or things like that. So we have these slides and you can see a trend where you might see, you know, proficient adding there. It just doesn't match up well with the 2017. So it's one of those things where you want to be cautious to not either celebrate something that may not be happening or certainly be assigning blame. One other thing that's interesting as I dig a little bit data, dig deeper at the South School, is that when you look at the grade levels, three, four, and five, the staffing, they've changed from this year to the previous year. At every grade level, there's been a staffing change from the previous year there. That's not an excuse. That just means when you're looking for consistency, you're not seeing that where that same team of teachers are over, you know, the transition from third to fourth. We've had a lot of changeover, not only at the classroom level, but obviously at the leadership level, third principal in three years. And so the big thing that jumped out to me when I looked at the MCAS data is that we had a lot of inconsistencies where you look for those trends of, wow, we're really trending positively with our ELA. And so that's something I'm going to talk about as we get towards our goals. A lot of the things that you've heard before about the way we can look at the data, we had pockets of good news where you'd see an increase and then you go to compare that to what we see in 2017 and it didn't necessarily match up. So we talked a little bit about that. I was, we move, identify that in the goals in a moment. Areas of strength, you can see here that we talked about. One thing I just want to talk a little bit more about is that third bullet. We've been very purposeful about making partnerships within the community, both with the local schools and the colleges. For example, with the Higgins, we had the STAR program come down, the STAR Club, I should say, and they worked with our fifth and fourth graders, coding, robotics, things like that. We then presented the technology night for our families, grades three, four, and five. That program came down as well as Ms. Stansfield from another program. And so the students led the activities with our third, fourth, and fifth graders. And a lot of the parents commented on how great it was to see the work that happens at the Higgins. Naturally, our students love learning from eighth graders. We had a sci, excuse me, we had a math night previously that we had a lot of the high school students come down to. So we had the high school students running the activities for our students. So you're making a connection within the community, which is important. Our children enjoy doing that. So even a lot of parents were excited to see what was happening with some of the Higgins students, some of the high school students, local colleges we've been making connections with. So we've been very purposeful building those partnerships. We've also made a really strong investment with technology, even though we, we love our building. We have our old, our old special building there and we've been really purposeful about infusing technology. So at the building level, we've made that commitment, we were able to add a fourth cart for Chromebooks for everybody to use. And then we've also been very purposeful around professional development for our teachers. As you can imagine, at most schools, there's, there's quite the spectrum of comfort level around integrating technology and things. So we were able to offer something where teachers could pick the readiness level they were at and their comfort levels. We had like a, had six courses for them to pick at that we could provide PD in. So it was great because you could basically move at your pace. We offered them three different times during the course of the year. So again, we feel like we're going to invest in having the technology. We want people to feel comfortable using it so it's getting to the students increasingly for that. So that was a good takeaway from this year. You can see, just see some of the other strengths that we mentioned. Areas of growth, there's certainly a lot of different things to look at. I'm going to talk a lot more about the third one when we get to one of our goals. I think a big problem we have, and I know I speak for a lot of the schools, is time. We look at the time we have to get together to plan, to meet. And that, I could probably double those, those bullet points very easily. And you end up, it's one of these things where you're like, all right, we have two meetings coming up and we have 20 things we want to go over. And you all know, if we want it to be meaningful, if we want it to really work well, we want to have all that time. And so I, it's not unique to the South School. I know we all have this challenge. It's just that there's a lot of things that we really want to do and sometimes you almost feel like you're triaging a little bit, like, well, we definitely better address this. we definitely better address this now in November and things. And so, we're trying to be creative, we're trying to find time where we can kinda, you know, maybe pull a few teachers and have some common planning during the school day. And so that's a, a goal that we're continuing to work on, how we could kinda work towards that. And like I said, I'll speak a little bit more to the third bullet when I talk about some of our goals moving forward. So I, I won't cover all the different focus areas. The next three goals are all around content, ELA, math, and science. And the first bullet, I kinda detailed in that content area, and then there's some themes. So I mentioned before some of the inconsistency. I think one of the big things that we're talking about now is getting some consistency, not only across the grade level, but then that articulation that if this is a math practice, let's have that work its way out vertically, second grade into third grade into fourth grade. And so, one of the things we're talking a lot about is that second bullet around looking at student data. We want it to be timely, we want it to be something that's just happened. So the MCAS is great to look at, I think it sets a, a nice baseline, but honestly, it's happened so long ago, that when we start to get those results into the, into the beginning of fall, we've already started moving along. And so we wanna look at unit tests, benchmark assessments, things that happen weekly, and start to look and talk about those assessments, so we can adjust our instructions. So I think the big thing, when we talk about some of our goals moving forward, we recognize tier-one instruction, we recognize we deliver, deliver the content the first time, and that a good majority of our students might be processing that. We know there's a significant number that are not. And so we have to be more purposeful, knowing that that occurs, what we can have in place for them. And tier-two, something, you know, you've all heard, talked about a little bit, what are we now doing for the students who the first tier-one instruction wasn't effective for? And we also have to go back to the classroom level and realize that we have to plan for that. We have to know that working in small groups, and data just plays a big part in that. So, I think we're talking about instructional practices, is what we really wanna look at improving. The third bullet, which also continues as the second goal, is about intervention time. It's not having our different groups working kinda separate from one another, so I think, again, this goes back to good practices and consistency, is having our different specialist teachers, whether it be special education, ELL supports, having that be a lot more services happening in the classroom, supporting what's happening with the teacher, not have it be such a separated, not exactly collaborating together. So that's another goal that works across all three of the subject areas. Mr. Smoyer mentioned earlier, the FOS program, we're very happy with that, at a very high interest level with the students, and so I think that's something that we're, again, the professional development, the time to, to work on that, to, to have those conversations around assessment. So again, we see each of the steps for that. Coaching cycles, we've talked a lot about having those, where that's, that's a voluntary, you're not being assessed, but it's a chance to have either administrator or colleague, quite frankly, go in, talk about ideas you're having, being more comfortable having your door open, and collaborating. And so that's, again, that's a practice that takes a little time to initiate, and as we build trust and work together, I think these are some of the consistent practices that will work across ELA, math, science, and all the content areas. So, some of these same strategies work for each of the goals. And then finally, we've made a very concerted effort to work on the culture at the school. We've had monthly activities for the students to, to achieve that they can have, we've had things within the school, you can just elicit different things that we've done. We've had three family nights this year, and I think we've been very purposeful around, you know, we talk to kids all the time, you know, being caught, being good, being good people, we've always done a lot of things to recognize that. We have forms, they can come down to the office to achieve, we've had monthly kindness calendar and things like that. So we've made a big, big push to recognizing that. There's a big piece of this academic part that we wanted to do. We also want you to be really good kids. We want you to be good kids that represent the school and your family well, and that work well together. So, we definitely recognizing that as a fourth goal that's important for us to have. So, in summary, the teachers are working really, really hard at the school. When I come in, I'm just so impressed by all the effort and things they put in. What I say to them all the time is, I don't want you working harder, but what practices can we put in that will make our work a little more efficient? So we talk about that, that, you know, it's not harder, harder, harder work, but let's collaborate a little bit more, and look at things to make them a little more efficient. So that's a goal overall, and I think consistency speaks to that. I think the more consistent things are for them, for us as a school, that we'll see that improvement. And we've seen that this year, and we're really excited, 'cause now it goes into year two, things start to stick a little bit more, and that's what we're gonna work towards. So, I know I spoke fast, 'cause I was trying to keep that clock time down, but that's our key information, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
If you can get to the slide where you thanked me.
He's right.
He's always right.
Oh, there's two slides. I can't see, I was trying to cut it short here. Budget considerations, again, I'm looking more primarily at personnel, 'cause I just feel like that's the biggest bang for our buck, the people working directly with our children. All these other programs are important, I don't mean to say, but math intervention teacher, we do have a literacy person who's fantastic, I see the valuable work she does every day, that's just a position that would be very valuable for us. I mentioned grade five, because I feel like we could, could we survive and, and work without it? Absolutely. But again, that direct contact with students, I always look at that as, as a high priority area. This year, thank you to Ms. Mertag, we've been able to have tutors at the school before school, so we've had a shorter ELA one, we've had a very significant math, and it's been fantastic. And so, and so having, again, we've talked about that tier-two intervention time, there it is, right there. So I think those are some of the highlights of considerations. And most importantly, and you can see who's the first one on the list, I do wanna make sure I point out, and, and again, I'll say this in all honesty, it's been great to come back to Pevydy, and, and the support is fantastic. And honestly, everyone here that's on this list, both at the central office level, colleagues picking up the phone, anyone that you get to call, school committee members have been visible and supportive, it is a great supportive place to work, and I mean that in all sincerity. It's really been great, so it's been a very positive experience. So now, I think I've finished, and I can take questions, so.
Mr. Higgins, another question, I just wanna thank you for providing stability to the South School community. As you said, you're the third principal in three years. I know parents appreciate it, teachers appreciate it, students obviously appreciate it, and we do as well. I see you out at events, it's not only the South School, you're out in Pevydy, like you said, you're a Pevydy resident, you're back, and I just wanna say, I really thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Higgins. On one of the budget considerations, technology funding, is there anything in particular that you were looking for?
So, I probably shouldn't have been as vague, but I think we talk about some of the programs, and Mrs. Smoyer alluded specifically to one, so I think as we look at either programming around some of the tier-two interventions, more that way, I think from a devices, where we've kind of invested in that, so I think more like software, either licensing or those particular programs. So, I probably should have specifically mentioned a few we were considering, but that was more the idea.
It's okay, maybe ask a question. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, thank you, thank you for making it quick, and you talked about common planning time, collaborative time with teachers. It's a theme that we've heard for years. Just give me how much, give me an idea of what you're talking about.
So, during the course of the school day, we don't have any built into our schedule. So, when we can be creative, when we have an opportunity, there may be an assembly, and we may say something like, let's grab a few teachers and move them around over here. So, there's monthly, excuse me, CPT meetings that we have built in. But again, when you're talking, you know, talking about that data and those timely meetings, so you have the data assessment on Thursday, and on Monday and Tuesday, that's when you really wanna strike. It's difficult at this time to do that, there's just not time during the day.
Yeah, so I mean, if we added like twenty minutes twice a week, is that...
That would be wonderful.
Okay. And then, you vaguely mentioned paraprofessional support.
Yes.
Can you elaborate?
Well, again, we have four full-time paraprofessionals at this time, and when you look at the number of meetings that are required at the different times, when there are many crises in the school, where you're then pulling on different staff personnel, it becomes, you strain the system very quickly. There's more days that you're just short for resources, covering a recess time, or going down to a class, 'cause we have to pull, there's an emergency meeting with a parent, and we need to pull someone. So it's more that idea of a few extra hands on deck, I guess, I'll say that, so.
All right. And lastly, if you can follow up with that technology piece, maybe talk to your colleagues at the leadership level, and pick, if you can, if you can agree on a program or two, perhaps it's something that might, you know, we might be able to look at as a district.
I'd be, I'd be happy to, to work with all my colleagues, and we can share some ideas, so absolutely. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Mark. Nick, are you next?
Good afternoon, good evening. Pleasure to be back here. I think it was about a year ago that I came to a school council or committee meeting, and got to meet you all and come aboard here in Pevydy, and it's been a great experience so far, and a real learning experience, and appreciate Dr. Levine and your support in that. I wanna just talk quickly about West School community. We're about two hundred and forty-eight students, that includes two Passos classrooms. We have two classrooms per grade level. I will say that our classroom sizes are good, ranging from about eighteen to twenty-two in our classes, so we're in a good place now, and look to be, as we look at projected enrollment next year. We do have three Choices classrooms, a K1, a K2, a 3, and a 4, 5, with about twenty-four therapeutic students. That adds and flows, we had nine students come to us in January, so, but that, that's gone very well. I would characterize the school as a first-year principal there, very high expectations from educators and parents. It's a neighborhood school, we don't have many students that bus, they come from the streets, they come from the neighborhoods to and from, very close-knit family atmosphere, and very high level of parent involvement and commitment. I see a little smile across the way there. In terms of demographics, we don't have a lot of ELL students, there's two in the building, and we don't have a large population of low-income students, and generally lower on the special ed side. As we talk a little bit, I'll talk about social-emotional needs, just because these populations are low, and some of those social and emotional needs come from this population, we still have a lot of students that have, have those needs, and I'll talk, talk about that as, as we go along. Terms of the NCAS data, I'm just gonna talk about ELA, and then math, and then science. As, as Mark talked about, it's hard to look at trends, because the new test is very different than the ones in prior years. In general, our third grade was quite strong, you can see the this year's, or the past year's MCAS results, seventy-eight percent, that's about thirty points higher than the state average for third-grade ELA. In fourth grade, it was a little bit different, and this is a cohort that's traditionally, as you look back across the data, been a little bit lower, with only thirty-five percent of our students either at the exceeding or meeting proficiency level. So, an area of concern, and as we look at goals, an area that we, that we wanted to focus on, something that definitely was highlighted when we met with, with our stu, our, our school council. Our fifth-grade ELA, pretty much in line with the state, plus or minus three points. But again, as Ray talked about, that item analysis, we really spent some time with our teachers, looking at what's underneath this data, and looking at some of those critical reading skills, and in specific, in ELA, writing is an area that really, that really needs attention, and an area where our students are not performing as high as they could be. When we look at math, again, third grade, very strong cohort, again, in the thirteen points above the state average level. Our fourth-grade math, MCAS, that same cohort is running just a few points below the state average, about three percentage points this year's MCAS. And then fabulous news, and again, it's just one year, our, our fifth graders at eighty-two percent proficient, which is thirty-seven points above the state average, so very pleased with that. Again, it's one, it's one data point. I think different than what Mark was talking about, is our instructional, our, our teachers have been very consistent, so we have that, and we benefit from, from that. In the science, again, pretty strong results in the science side, still work to do here, especially with FOS, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but we're running, you know, about fourteen points ahead of, of the state on the science side of things. Terms of strengths, the West has many, and I'll start with staff. Our educators really care about the kids, they look at them from an academic perspective, and from a interpersonal and social-emotional perspective. Our parents, on balance, are very involved, PTO is committed, but as parents, they're committed to their child's education, and that really helps with the partnership. And our students care. Most of our students are really invested in their learning, they're caring. Some of them are afraid to take risks in their learning, and we're really working on that, and I would say, as we look at the goals, trying to get students to accept failure and making mistakes as part of that, that learning process. One of the things that we've really put into place, this would be an initiative that we started this year, is really taking a look at every student in the building in terms of where they are, what they're learning in their benchmark. We did something called Meet My Learner at the beginning of the year, where our team of reading specialists, guidance counselor, special ed, sat down, and we met with every single teacher, and we talked about each child individually, where they were in their reading benchmarks, where they were with math, and where they were socially, emotionally, tried to identify their needs. We identified, we coded them kind of red, green, and yellow, and began to look at very specific interventions to help support their gaps, either learning gaps or social-emotional gaps. We did a mid-year assessment of all those students, and we've really tried to monitor them closely, and see how the interventions that we are putting in place are, are having an impact on those students. Lastly, with a therapeutic program in the building, big kudos to our school adjustment counselor, who's new to us, Maria Champagny. She comes with a lot of clinical experience, she's really, really been fabulous. Kristen Bellino, who's gone into that district director role, continues to be a major force for us and a major advantage. But our school counselor has really teamed with that team, not only for our Choices students, but for some of the students who experience social-emotional challenges in the building. And last but not least, Officer Rick Cochran, and more recently, Eric Ritchie, are huge players, and a real contributing factor to our students and that, that social-emotional learning environment. Where we need to focus from the data, we definitely need to focus on our fourth-grade ELA and fifth grade, and as I said, when we looked at the item analysis, writing is a big focus, and then some of the more critical reading skills, you know, evidence from the text, main ideas, some of the things that Ray mentioned are, are common in our, in our learning community as well. Want to continue to leverage our intervention resources to really maximize an impact on student learning, and as we get to the end, we talk about budget impact. Beverly mentioned that those home-to-school, technology-based intervention tools are on our list as well. We think there's real value in building that home-to-school partnership, and we think there's real value in not only for our tier-one, but for our tier-two students, and helping them use high-interest technology-based tools to help do that. And then lastly, we really feel we need to keep going with a social-emotional curriculum. We're doing a lot of tier-one instruction with our school counselor, we're doing tier-two with a counselor, and with our school adjustment counselor, our Choices therapeutic students, but we really don't have a consistency of curriculum across that, and a progression of learning across our grade levels. We know that Ms. Mertag and Dr. Levine have really, and Mrs. Grube have begun to invest and look at a social thinking curriculum, and we think that we can kinda ride on those coattails, and really, really take advantage of that, and implement that, so we have a common progression of learning, and we have a common set of language across the building. Our goals, as a new principal, I'm really working to continue to build strong relationships with parents, ones of trust and mutual respect. Foster a mindset of growth, not only with our educators, but with our students. As I said, some of our students are afraid to make mistakes, and even with a new principal in the building, some of our educators wanna be perfect, they don't wanna make a mistake, they sometimes don't wanna take risks, and we've worked really hard to create an environment where they can share their... And we've worked really hard to create an environment where they can share their practice. They'll do that in a staff meeting. And they open their classrooms to each other to share that practice and let that visitation and that sharing occur. And that growth is starting to happen, so we're excited about that. And really, you know, I have a word of the week every week with students and we talk about, one of them was failing forward. It's okay to make mistakes, learn from your mistakes, and move forward. And lastly, continuing to focus on efficient and regular communications with parents, and that's a goal that will sit there year after year. In the literacy and math area, you'll see a lot of commonality. Continue to focus on Tier One instruction. I know in math, as in literacy, we did a lot of professional development with Looney Math and really looked at a different framework of instruction where instead of whole-group instruction and then independent practice, really looking at mini lesson, then targeted small-group instruction. So, we're looking at the data in the classroom to see what different groups of students need and then meaningful learning centers that are occurring and allow that Tier One instruction to happen, small-group instruction to happen, and give kids what they need. We do ELA and MCAS tutoring. Our reading specialist has really done a good job targeting students, growing them and their reading skills. And then when it's time to release them and move on to those other students that might need it. And lastly, really working with our paraprofessionals. I can't remember if it was Mark or Ray that mentioned this, really looking at trying to move these resources into a classroom. And with that framework for instruction, with that small group happening, that allows maybe a student to get a dose from the teacher in a small-group setting, but also to get another dose from either the special ed teacher or that reading specialist in the classroom as well. Writing continues to be a focus. We've had some fun with this this year. Actually, we had Dr. Seuss stay in our second graders. I challenged them to write like Dr. Seuss. Then they came up in front of the whole school at one of our school meetings and shared, and one little second grader wrote this story, "It's a Good Day for Zay." And she was fabulous. So, more of that, more author programs, but really helping to build writing stamina within our learning community and our students. Math, I've talked about most of this already, really, looking at that framework for instruction. Again, a hats off and a thank you for the math tutors. That's not, we didn't have those intervention resources where we had a reading specialist. We now have some math tutors that are really making a difference, and we're hoping to keep that going next year in terms of funding. VASN program has been fabulous. Our students, I have lunch with our fifth graders during the course of the year and they're really excited about it. They're engaged in it. It's really the professional development that the district is invested in is paying off. It's a learning curve, as Ray said. I think we maintain fidelity with the program and keep going. I think it's going to really continue to pay dividends for our students. And it puts that progression of learning from kindergarten through first grade in place, so we're really, you know, they're building skills year on year. Social-emotional skills, again, we don't have a low socially-economically disadvantaged population, but we still have a lot of students who experience anxiety, who have family difficulties, who experience loss, and really need supports in this area. I think getting that social learning, social thinking curriculum in place will be key. We continue to do Tier One instruction with our school counselor. They push, she's able to push into classrooms, once a week into the classrooms to do direct instruction. That's been really helpful as well as doing groups. And then situationally providing students opportunity for self-reflection. Sometimes that's small-group based, whole-group based, and even in a disciplinary situation that can occur. Budget considerations, the top two are really known. We, and our safety base, I know that you're looking at the phone system across, from a safety perspective in our building, that would be really helpful because the only place we can call an emergency from right now is from the main office. With a new phone system, it would allow us to do that from anywhere in the building, given an emergency situation. I've met with Tim Healy. We walked through the building. And I know Dr. Levine is well aware of the list of things that we've got, and many of the buildings have to work on in area safety. I appreciate Dr. Levine's support on the third bullet, which is really maintaining adequate staffing for our Choices therapeutic program, especially in the paraprofessional area. That can sometimes be a safety thing. And we needed some additional support and got that, and just want to maintain that. Social skills, social thinking curriculum, this is something that, my understanding, it's coming, but I think we're very excited about it and looking forward to invest in it. I raise up math benchmarks here. We have the, a reading benchmark, but we don't have a norm-based math benchmark. And I think that's something that could be helpful across the district, but certainly at the West. And lastly, this really echoes what I think you've heard from the other two principals I know. Ms. Beckett is looking at MobiMax. I look for us to collaborate as colleagues, and it's been wonderful to work with him in my first year, to look at what those resources are, to look at the research and to try to maybe pick some common platforms that we can share across our elementary schools. And the last slide, thank you, Dr. Levine. And Ms. Mertag, it's been great and I am so thankful for the opportunity to be here and for your support during my first year. Mayor Bettencourt, you school committee members, it's great to see you at different events and at our school. My colleagues that are here and not here, they're a super team. And whenever I need to make a phone call, they're there. Our school council members, Christian Bedard, Craig Welton, who's from Suzanne Woodson, Mrs. Cavino, assistant principal, who's here, thank you for her support. And Harlan Fasil. But our teachers are fabulous, our parents are fabulous, and most importantly, the kids at the West are awesome. So, thank you. Any questions?
Good job, Nick. And on the left, but certainly not our least performance tonight, fabulous Elaine Metropolis from the Brown School. No, we clap afterwards. Even though she's fabulous, we're going to clap.
Good, how are you?
It might be easier because you have a lot of papers.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Since my esteemed colleague Nicole only used 15 minutes, I may have to infringe upon the other. Yes, please yield your five minutes to me. Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I'm going to go over very quickly parts of this MCAS, the parts with the MCAS, because there are so many things that I, not that the MCAS is not important, it is, but there are so many things that are more important that I want to concentrate on. So, here we have our demographic data, and I want to point out a few things to you. If you look on students with disabilities, you'll see... Middle, yeah. It's not...
It connects to the back.
What?
The little button.
No, all right, that's okay. I don't, but how old, I'm not going to be able to advance the slides. Yes, I will. I'm looking for the little red laser thing. Is that not working? All right. You're the tech guy, Mark. Yeah, I'm counting on you. So, if you look at students with disabilities, you will see that we're 32 percent. We have 154 students in our school who are on an IEP. There you go. How'd you do it? That middle guy. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, not so much, Mark. Oh, I see it. Okay. So, this one, we have 154 students. The high-needs population, more than half of our school is high-needs population. We have 41 students in our school that are open enrollment and 12 students who are on school choice. So, I'd like you to keep in mind those numbers as I go through this presentation, as it is very important and it does affect our scores. Currently, we have about 385 students. And here is our enrollment data. I'll let you take a peek at that. If you look at 2016, 2017, you'll see that we enjoy relatively, we enjoyed relatively low class size. But if you'll notice, the plus special ed, the students who are, oh my goodness, I'm not going to use that. The students who are in those classes below the ASD and the Connections and the Milestones, all of those students have to go into our general ed classrooms for parts of the day and for all of our specials. So, that's why those plus special ed are up there. So, for example, in grade three, we have an average class size of 18. However, if you look at the Connections 3, 4, the ASD 3, 4, 5, and the Milestones 2, 3, students from that class have to go into those classes for parts of the day. So, keep that in mind. If you look at 2017, 18, you'll see a little bit of a difference. Our four Connections class have now merged into our general ed classrooms and have become co-teaching classrooms. So, in kindergarten through grade five, we have three of each class, but one of those classrooms is a co-teaching classroom. So, in every grade level, we have one co-teaching classroom. We still have our K1, 2, and 3, 4, 5 autism classes, and we have our three Milestones classes. This is our projected enrollment. Next year, we expect to have about 406 students. I will need 29 teachers. And if you look through here, you will see that we would need three classrooms. If, again, I want you to pay attention because look at grade three, although our projected enrollment is only 59, and normally, that would mean two classrooms and two teachers, we have to remember that those inclusion students, excuse me, the Milestones and autism students have to go into those classrooms for parts of the day and for all specials. And to be legally compliant with the union contract, at no time can a class go over the allotted class size.
Elaine, you're getting three teachers for grade three.
What?
You're getting three teachers for grade three.
Thank you. That was, I mean, that was easy button.
But I was going to give you a four.
Oh, hey. All right. So, with the next-generation MCAS, you know that because of this, we have not received a level. We, in the last couple of years, you know that we had been a Level Three and worked very, very hard, very diligently to get up to Level Two. We were very proud of ourselves, but unfortunately, no level this year. The percent of teachers who, the percentage of teachers who are highly qualified is 100 percent at the Brown School, and our school attendance rate is higher than the district and the state at 95.5. I'm putting this first before all the MCAS charts because you can see, if you look at the achievement, we're very close to Massachusetts and the district. The chart came out very fuzzy, so if you look up there at the top where the arrows are pointing down, that will give you a little bit of an indication. So, I like to look at this chart. This is the part I want to concentrate on. We're continuing with the good stuff at the Brown. We have a sensory room that we built, which is going great. We have piloted an adaptive music class, and we have continued with it and also expanded it. So, now our autistic students and one of our Milestones classrooms is now getting adaptive music class. And the music teacher reports that those classes are doing great, and kids at that, with that disability, really need to spend some time with music, with expression, with movement, and it's working great. We have reverse mainstreaming going on in our K1, 2 autism class. Mrs. Thorpe has students in grades four and five who come down to her classroom and work with her students. It is a fabulous model. It is a win-win for the kids, and it's a win-win for the upper-grade level students. They're working together great. We continue with our grand reveal, which we piloted and now other schools are using. We have, last year, we did a mock marathon. We had Ms. Nowell, one of our special ed teachers, who happens to be here tonight, and she ran the Boston Marathon and then did a mock marathon with her class, and we'll be doing that again this year. We continue to host the Green Fest. I'm on the Green Peabody Committee, and so we do host the Green Fest. This year, we had Jared Whitberg, who was an Eagle Scout, who updated our garden beds and even made another one. So, now we have four. We also have composting going on at the school with our gardens, and it's really going well. This year, as every year in the last few years, we have our school-wide autism awareness rally, and we had several distinguished guests this year, including the mayor and some school committee members come. Mr. Olivio, thank you. And that goes great. This year, we also do our yearly firefighter appreciation assembly, where we ask all the firefighters from each of the departments to come down, and we do an assembly of thanks for them and give them big baskets of gifts. We have our outdoor classroom, which was also built previously by an Eagle Scout, and it is just a fabulous place for kids to go out and have classroom outdoors. We have our math stairs, as you can see the picture, and we have a strong relationship with the city. The VASN program was piloted at the Brown School. I was on the wellness committee, and we found this grant and said, "This VASN program looks good." And I said, "Let's try it. I'll volunteer my school," which we did, and now it's in every school, so it's going great. We also have, I'm on the Tilly's Farm Education Committee, so we are in works with doing a history project for them and also working with them and the Peabody Historical Society to help build the educational piece of Tilly's Farm. You heard about our Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, who have done so much for our school. The Recreation Department has many, many programs at our school, including the famous Uigui, Uiglooey, which is very popular, and also the Green Peabody Committee, which does the Green Fest. So, here is the MCAS data, and as I said, these really speak for themselves. And because we can't really compare the previous years, and if you notice, I have the 13, 14, 15, 16 on one side, and then the 2017 on the other, and the same with the graphs, it's very hard to compare. I will tell you, as a general rule, we need to, we have a high incidence of warning in all the, in all the grade levels. Now, what I'm going to tell you is not an excuse, it is a reason. The state has put out a strong push to reduce the number of MCAS alt portfolios. So, we took that very seriously, and we went from 26 alt portfolios to 10. That means that all those students who did not get an MCAS alt portfolio took the regular MCAS. They all received warnings, as does every student who takes an MCAS portfolio. So, I'm just letting you know about that. It is reality. It is what it is. We're working very hard. Here's our grade four ELA, and again, as you can see, our highest numbers are in the meeting expectations and partially-meeting expectations, and then we have 16 in the warning. Grade five, the same, we following the same patent, pretty much. Here's grade three math, and again... Here's grade three math, and again, you can see there's a high incidence. We have many third-grade students last year who were in our special programs, and as a result, some of those students went from MCAS alt portfolio and took the regular MCAS. Most of those students are tested one-to-one or in a very small group setting. Grade four is the area where I really think we need to try to move some students. That third, the orange line, where it's partially meeting expectations, we want to move those over. We want to get those over into meeting expectations. Whoops, I think I... And grade five math, and here's the science. So, and again, we have a fabulous science teacher in Diane Bugler. She is the one who is in charge of all our environmental activities. She is the one who is our DI championship. She runs DI for the whole city, and we have several DI teams at our school, one of whom actually came in first this year. We were very excited. And if any of you went to the recess for Randy gala, you saw a video that was put together by a group of students for DI. And for DI, they have to do it, and Bev, you can attest to this, they have to do it all on their own. They cannot get any help from an adult. Their coaches are there, but they cannot, they cannot tell them what to do or suggest what they do. So they put that together all on their own, they made a video, and they presented it at the gala, and they also presented it at the DI competition, and they won first place, so we're very proud of them. So here are our areas of strength, and this is where I would like to be able to talk a little longer. And if you see, our co-teaching classrooms are right at the top, and I will tell you, the co-teaching classroom is also right at the top of our areas in need of growth, because this is such a strength for us. Again, we're piloting it in the city, but we also need to grow, and so we will continue to work on that program. I'm not going to go over everything. I just made a few highlights. Thank you very much, Ms. Murtagh, for our Title I math tutor this year. We are so excited. I can't tell you what a difference it's making. And with all of our two-reading and one-math tutor for Title I, we are targeting K in one. So you'll see when, you'll see later that I'm going to be asking for something else in that regard. We also have a very strong instructional support team. We have received many compliments on how we are handling that. We have very few referrals, and we are, I will tell you, the teachers at the Brown School are very savvy. When they bring a child before the IST and talk about the child, they have already tried every strategy, every possible accommodation, everything they can possibly do, so that we are really digging deep when they come to us to try to help them find more strategies, which we do, and we're able to maintain them in the general ed setting. We have a wonderful PTO who are very generous. We, I would like to talk to you a little bit about the strong sense of community at the Brown School. We do something called Morale Pals, and this is a teacher thing, but it builds community. And what we do is, Erin Thorpe runs it, and anyone who wants to be in this program, they fill out a, sort of like a little questionnaire, and it's like, "What are your favorite things? What do you like to eat? What's your favorite non-alcoholic drink?" You know, all those kinds of things. And then she puts them all in a hat, and she pairs two people up. So everybody has a morale pal. And every morning, you can walk into the Brown School, and right in front of all the mailboxes, you will see bags of gifts with beautiful ribbons and tissue paper, and people buy things for their morale pal. It could be something as small as a candy bar and a stick of gum to today. I got a $25 gift certificate to the Outback, and I got a beautiful, like a cute little top. So you never know what you're going to get, but it's wonderful. It's a great pick-me-up, and it's really building morale. So we're excited about that. We also have our Environmental Eagles program. We have, the other thing I wanted to show you was this social-emotional learning in the classroom book. We bought this. This is from Bill Rebus. Principal's got some nice professional development in it, and I purchased some so that we have two teacher book clubs going, and we're working on this book. We have a K-1, 2, and a 3-4-5 group. So we're very excited about that. We also have the Title III Before-School Program for ELL students, our polished dental program, partnerships that we have throughout the city. We also have the Pen Pal Program with the senior citizens, and Mrs. Canaly's third-grade class writes pen pals back and forth, and at the end of the year, they meet. Last year, they met at the Brown School. We have a little luncheon for them. This year, they're actually going, we're going to the senior center, and we're going to be meeting with them. And it's really nice, because they finally get to see in person their pen pal. We have 45 students in the Backpack Program. That's very strong. That's, Mr. Hockman, that's a great program, and our students are really lucky to have it. Let's see. Our social thinking program is up and strong, and I'm going to go a little more into depth on that. And FKO, we have 56 in our after-school program and 26 in the before-school. We had a college intern working with our guidance council this year, and she did a whole, her whole thesis was on college and career readiness. So she did that with our third and fourth graders, and the kids really loved it. Okay. Now I'm going to go on to areas in need of growth. That list is not that long. Okay. So I'm going to say at the very top of my list is social-emotional well-being of students. I have never, I've been in administration now for 15 years, and I have never seen it like it is now. Our kids come to us in trauma. They come to us in crisis. It is just mind-boggling what, I don't know how they come to school each day sometimes, because they have so much in their lives going on that, you know, I know for a fact that the six hours they spend at school a day is probably the best part of their day. So that is why we're reading that book. That is why we're studying about social-emotional learning and trying to help these students. Part of the reason for this is we have a large high-need, as I said, 52% of our students are high-needs population, and some of these students are in crisis. Our special ed programs, we have our co-teaching initiative, which again, is a work in progress. So we're putting it as an area in need of growth. We will continue that. One thing that we will really be needing, we have full-time support personnel is needed. We really need a full-time BCBA. A new, all-inclusive playground, really doesn't have anything to do with you, but I will tell you that so far, we have, our goal is to build this playground, which will be $300,000, and we have raised $54,496 so far. So we're very proud of that, and we will continue to work on that, and hopefully, I know it won't happen next year, but we will persevere on that. Title I, the one thing I'm hoping for is, and I feel greedy asking for this, because we just got the math Title I extra person, but I would love to have some upper-grade supports with math, because we're targeting K in one, and I would love to get some support up there for the upper-grade levels. The other thing where we're going to need some growth is, especially for our special ed population, we need technology equipment, like new iPads. The iPads we have are very old. We need new apps. We need communication devices for students with communication disabilities, assistive technology equipment. We need a color printer. I envy my colleagues who came with these beautiful packets that are all in color. We do not have a color printer. We need them, because we use the, I want to call them the Maya Johnson symbols, but they're the...
Boardmaker.
Boardmaker. So they're the little symbols we use for our students who need charts and who don't necessarily have a verbal communication, and so we use charts with them and little pictures to communicate, and those are best if they're done in color. We also, my teachers are asking for touchscreens. Currently, they're using touchscreens. They've got, like, they Velcro things on top of their computers, and they don't match up, so they're hoping that they can use that. We continue to have space issues at the Brown. We have so many places that we can't, that are used and booked, so we have trouble finding places for meetings and for classrooms and those kinds of things. I will tell you, I think it was last year, Dr. Levine said, "Your numbers, you could have a fourth kindergarten," and I couldn't even say, I said, "Thank you," but I have no place to put them. So that's a concern that we continue to have. The other thing the teachers asked me, I brought this up at one of our staff meetings, I asked the teachers, "What would you like me to say in my presentation about our strengths and areas that we need to grow on?" And one of the things they said is, "They love the FOS program, and the PD has been wonderful, but they would love to have FOS come in and do some more modeling, modeling of lessons." They also, I'm sure you must be aware, but the para-contract, the paras are, all must have CPI training. They are paid to take it. However, the teachers do not have that in their contract. So teachers are, teachers really need to be trained in CPI. Currently, Ms. Murtagh has all the administrative team being trained in CPI, but we also need to make sure that we get our teachers and make them feel valued, that we would like them to be trained as well. And the last issue, which is, I feel, an area in need of growth, is substitutes. Every day at the Brown School, we do not have enough substitutes. We don't have substitutes for teachers, paras, and sometimes custodians. So I know that's a district-wide problem. I know Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh and Mary Ellen are beside themselves. They're working on it. There are just nobody. So if you know anyone who wants to substitute in the PBD school system, that would be great. Okay. So the next one is school improvement goals, and I have a social-emotional goal, mathematics, science, English language arts, co-teaching, and digital literacy. I will tell you, I try to, I try to keep my goals simple and basic, for the most part, because, I don't know if you know, you probably do, I am retiring at the end of the year, which is very bittersweet for me, and it's very difficult to talk about and even think about. However, whoever the new principal is coming in, I want him or her to be able to have some sort of say in these goals and tweak them the way he or she feels best. I just want to show you how our special ed programs have changed. This was 2016-17, and you can see that we had 26 MCAS alt portfolios, we had 77 autistic students. And if you see in the middle, the purple, the connections classrooms, the following year, we actually added one more connections classrooms. And then we have the autism classrooms on the left, two of them, and then the three milestones. The following year, this year, you can see that all of those connections, the four connections classrooms, are now, have gone into the co-teaching, and there are co-teaching classrooms on the bottom for each grade level. We still keep our ASD classrooms and our milestones. We have 58 students in self-contained classrooms, and we have 154 students on IEPs and 10 MCAS alt portfolios. I'm just going to skip over that. So goal one. Just to continue to enhance students' math abilities by using number talks and guided math, we want to continue on the math, the guided math model, continue, hopefully, pending funding with Looney Math Consulting. They are the best I have ever seen. We want to continue emphasis on mental math, number talks, math literacy, use of manipulative, subitizing, and learning math facts, and we want to continue opportunities for students to write. ELA, we would like to have our reading specialists and Title I tutors continue to support struggling students. We want to incorporate, now this is a big thing. In our MCAS before and in all our writing ventures, students take a pen to paper. Now with the emphasis on technology and the use of Chromebooks, kids now, it's not that it goes from their brain to the pencil to the paper, it now goes from their brain to the computer, which is a whole different thinking process. So we want to make sure that they are using those Chromebooks for their student writing assignments whenever they can. So we do that now for our grand reveal in the morning. And we really need to concentrate on writing, writing across the curriculum, math, science, we have notebooks for those. Digital literacy, I'm on the District Digital Literacy Committee, and we want to continue to work on that. This was one of my goals last year. We're continuing on that. We are working on another parent presentation. We've done surveys with our students. We've had people from the state come in to talk to our students about it, and it's really going well, and we want to make sure that we implement those digital literacy standards into all our classrooms, K to 5. We want to continue with our co-teaching model, and this is, in case you're not familiar, it's a classroom with one general ed teacher, one special ed teacher, at least one or more para-professionals, and those students that go in there to those classrooms are all students under the umbrella of autism and mild to moderate. We focus on differentiated instruction and small-group instruction, and you have to realize that whenever you put an extra body, whether it's a para or another teacher or a Title I person into a classroom, you immediately reduce class size. And you get to, then you also are able to use a strategy of small-group instruction and collaboration. And as you know, in the business world nowadays, collaboration is the big thing. People need to be able to, they can't just be smart and know what, how to write a plan or whatever. They need to be able to collaborate, and that's important for our kids. And the other thing we want to work on, and I'm working with Ruth Grooby on this, is to refine the method of identifying students who go into these classrooms. We've had to do some changing this year midstream, because some of the students were not appropriate in those classrooms. And science, fabulous, fabulous program, FOS Science. I can't say enough wonderful things about them. I was on that adoption committee. I've worked with Ms. Murtagh and the FOS people, and they are great to work with, and our students are engaged in hands-on experiments. We are doing all we can do, and we're trying to make sure that they are implementing that program with fidelity. And the last one is the social-emotional piece. We want to make sure, and as I said, I really think this is so important. Currently, we are using, we have piloted and adopted the social thinking curriculum. It's from Michelle Garcia Winner. And we, two years ago, we started with K in one, then we did grade two and three. We are up to, everyone now is doing it in the classroom, and you will see some of the characters as super flex, and I think there's Rock Brain and Glass Man, and they all mean something to the children, because they're trained in it. We're going to continue the teacher book club with the social-emotional learning in the classroom. We have two book clubs going on, and we'll do another one hopefully next year. How Big Is My Problem, Whole Body Listening, Kindness Awareness, and Zones of Regulation are following, so I'm going to, this is the social thinking, this is Michelle Garcia Winner. I'm not going to, I have a little video clip in there, but I'm not going to play it for the purpose of time-saving, but if that is the link, if you want to go on and learn about it. And I will say that they are adopting this program in some other schools. Ms. Murtagh, is that correct, the social thinking curriculum?
Yes, all of our school adjustment counselors have been trained. They are training the guidance counselors, and it will be the train-the-trainer model that will go as required.
Excellent. So we satted that at the Brown, I'm very proud to say. So the Zones of Regulation is part of that program, and you can see that there are different zones, and the children get to understand what the blue zone, green zone, yellow zone, red zone mean, and then they also know what they can do if they identify themselves. "How are you feeling?" "Well, you know what? I'm in the blue zone. I'm really sad." Okay, they know what they can do then, so what can you do to help you get out of that blue zone? So they're very familiar with this terminology. Whole Body Listening is another thing that we work on with the students, and using their eyes, their ears, to make sure they're looking at the person, that they're listening to the person, that they're making sure their hands are in their own space, their feet are in their own space, and that, you know, all of these parts of your body... are in their own space, and that, you know, it, all of these parts of your body are involved in listening, not just your ears. And the How Big Is Your Problem, so many times the kids come, they, they've made a mistake, they think it's the end of the world, they come in my office and they're crying, they're upset, and I always say, "I don't, I don't want the kids to be afraid of me. I want them to be afraid to disappoint me." And that's what I usually say, "I am so disappointed." And then we talk about, "You made a mistake, let's look on the chart." Do we have to call 911? Is this an emergency? Is this a major problem? Or is it a little glitch? You know, we fix it, we move on, if the problem's so small, we don't even need really to talk about it much, but we move on. So I find myself using this chart a lot at school. And the budget considerations. We really need a fourth Chromebook cart. My goal has always been, we have four pods at the Brown School, I have purchased two of them out of my budget, and we would really like to get a fourth one so that we have one in each pod. We really, 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 really need a full-time BCA for our special education programs. Almost every day, I am, I would say I spend, I'm going to say 65 to 70% or more on working with students who are having behavioral issues. We also need to upgrade the field area in the back of school, it is, the grass is gone, it's complete mud, we need to do something to fix that, it's, the kids can't even go out there anymore, it's just complete mud. We also, as you probably know, we have an icicle problem that forms on the side of the school where the, the arrival and dismissal doors are. So sometimes in the middle of winter, this year wasn't too bad, but we have that icicle problem, and the icicles hang right over the door where students come in and out, so we have to sometimes change that. And then every year for the last nine years, I have asked to reinstate the Point Five Assistant Principal, we had one, it was lost in the budget nine years ago, and I really think that would be something that would help at our school. I would like to thank Dr. Levine, and he's not even here. Oh, he's over there. Dr. Levine, thank you. Number one on the list. Okay. And Kara Murtagh, who, again, I call all the time when I, when I have a problem, and she comes running. They both came running to me today, and I didn't even ask them, they just were there. The mayor, Benton Court. School Resource Officer, Rick Cochran, who is fabulous, I can't say enough about that, that man, he's wonderful. All of our school committee members, you are just fabulous, you're involved, we value you. Special Education Director, Ruth Grooby, all of my principal colleagues, teachers, students, parents, and volunteers, and then my Brown School council members. Helen Apostolitis is my community member, she is former principal of the Welch School, now retired, she is one of my mentors. Mark Boe, who is a parent, Jason Corbett, who is a parent, Sandy DeSilva, a parent, and Elizabeth Mova, I have four parents and four teacher members. Elizabeth Offelous, grade one teacher, Ashley Gunner, who is here tonight, thank you, Ashley, for coming. And she's a reading specialist. Wendy Purtle, who is the guidance counselor, and myself. So, in every language possible, thank you to all of you, and at this point in time, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. How far did I go over my time?
I lost track about an hour.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
I'd like to say something before we go.
Okay.
With her, I think, the staff and quality administrators, including some very wonderful principals. But no one exemplifies the tremendous strength of this school district, Northern Land Metropolis, and losing her is going to be very difficult for all of us, more than many of you know. She is running one of the most complex schools I've ever seen, with some of the most complex population I've ever seen, and she's just the right person in the right place for the right time for those kids. I can't imagine someone stepping into her shoes, I don't think anybody will. Somebody will step into that school, not into her shoes. So, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for everything that you do throughout your life.
Thank you very much for those kind words, thank you.
With that, then our presentation is over. Do we need a five minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Five-minute break, Mr. and Mrs. Chair. Five-minute break. I thank you for being here.
Good evening, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being April 10th, 2018. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and it's also being broadcast live by PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent allowable by law. I'd like to first start off the meeting, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, and I did want to say that our assistant, our superintendent Herb Levine is present, along with our Assistant Superintendent Kara Murtagh, our Business Manager Jared Stanton, as well as our Human Resources Director Steve Farrell, and our school committee members. I'd like to turn over to Dr. Levine, who's going to be introducing our Student Advisory Council, who's here today.
Thank you very much, I'd like to introduce Eric Buckley, the high school principal, who will introduce our student council members.
Well, student council, our student advisory, is a little short, I think we have to make up names because of what other committees, so I have Audrey Gabriel, she's a junior at our school.
If you would come to the center and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, thank you very much.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, kids.
Audrey and John, welcome, it's great to have you here, I know we always look forward to hearing what's taking place at the high school, so I will turn it over to you whenever you're ready.
Before you start, I would like to let you know that you are the first folks to sit at the Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn table of honor, because she has arranged this, this way, and we appreciate all the work that you, all the thought that went into it, and all the work that you did.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The last quarter of the year has finally started, and sophomore class has, sophomore class has taken MCAS already, and this year we've decided to devote the entire third floor to MCAS, so all other classes were taken in the first two floors at the, until the end of fifth period. And spring sports have started, and we have had the parent meeting for this year. And a couple weeks ago, we've had Foreign Language Week, and we've devoted each day to having music play in the halls during transitions between classes, and each day had a certain theme to celebrate the diversity of our school. And we have also already done scheduling for underclassmen, so next year's schedules are being finalized. And on April 25th, it's scheduled to have Julia McGrath have a meeting with the parents on social media and its role in family. And auditions for the musical have already began, and we are working on a version of Oklahoma. And on May 5th, Pride, City Pride cleanup volunteer work is being done for the city. And also the Corral and Band trips to Philadelphia and Washington. Pennsylvania, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania are scheduled for next week during April vacation. And that is all.
Thank you, John.
So, as John mentioned, it was the end of third quarter this Friday, which means that for many of us, this marks the beginning of a very busy quarter, especially for our upperclassmen, as it is exam season. AP testing starts May 7th, and SATs officially begin May 5th or 2nd, I want to say, for subject tests. As John told you, sophomores did have MCAS, but during MCAS, we actually began doing seminars for our freshmen, juniors, and seniors. So while they were testing on the third floor, we, we dedicated the first and second floors for sectioning off like different seminars, as freshmen took some bio-MCAS prep to prepare them for the tests that they're taking later in the year, juniors had SAT prep to prepare us for the tests we're taking later in the year, and seniors had it good, they were, they had some mindfulness exercises to, you know, to promote their mental health, as well as their physical health, because they did do a couple activities in the gym, and there was a lot of positive feedback there. As well as that, there have been Saturday sessions throughout this month, we just took, AP Maths took their mock exams, AP Englishes were working through taking their mocks, and there's another Saturday session for our AP Science classes. And so, April 30th marks kind of the end of our academic season with Academic Awards Night. Wednesday is actually the induction of the next class of NHS members, and so that will be tomorrow night in the auditorium. Along with that, National Honor Society has been busy holding a fundraiser for the Northeast Annual Shelter, which is going on currently, we're getting donations to give just any supplies we can to help them out. As John said, we do have the band corral trips, but we also have DECA trips, and the Scotland-Ireland trip will be taking place as well during April break. It's been busy, April 26th, we have a benefit, Gary Gullman is actually coming to our school to host a comedy night for the student-based health center that we have. It's very important to us because we're raising funds and awareness, I know I myself am part of Youth Advisory Council, so we work with the health center to promote the services that we bring to students. And on May 1st, we're actually taking a trip to the State House, we'll be touring and speaking with our representatives to share our stories and how we think that this should spread to many of the high schools around us. Even more fundraisers throughout May with Dodgeball for the class of 2019, that'll be a fun night for us to go out, see the rest of the school. The student-faculty basketball game is on May 2nd, it's always a treat to see our teachers go head-to-head with our student athletes. And seniors who get out on May 17th have prom coming up, I know today was the last day for ticket sales, they have Student Government Day this Thursday for those participating, so a lot of you will get to see our seniors in action. And actually, on April 6th, we sent two representatives to the State House for Massachusetts Student Government Day, and so two of our own seniors were lucky enough to go to the State House and debate on two bills, and actually really participate and be able to get experience in working in government. The last time we were here, we talked about the walkout, which actually ended up being held March 15th because of the weather, March 14th couldn't happen, but it ended up being very successful. The speeches were amazing, the students were very respectful from both sides, and I think everyone can say that it was ultimately a success. So, thank you.
John, Audrey, thank you so much. Any questions or any thoughts from the committee? Terrific, and again, thank you, these are important, your reports are always very important to us, to find out what's taking place, and to learn from your perspective, your thoughts on some of the things that are taking place in the city, so thank you so much.
I would like to, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just say a quick word about the gathering that we had on the 15th, you're absolutely right, Audrey, it was a wonderfully done, classy way to go about having students voice their opinions and voice, and have their voice heard. And I would like to remind the community that I had said previously, trust the students, and you've earned that trust, and you certainly didn't let us down, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckley?
Just to add to that, it, it was really well done, but also for MCAS too, this past, or the last week of March, when we were doing the ELA, they mentioned about how we did something different this time, instead of testing in the usual area and having practice go in and out of the, the rooms, we segregated a whole part of the school for the 10th grade in Seashouse, and we ran a number of different events and workshops, and the amount of planning that went into that, in such a short amount of time, I just wanted to publicly thank Kim McHugh, Judy Manietis, and Jarrett House, who, who really worked out on it, our teachers, you know, that's a huge change in the day, our students were great, and you can imagine the logistics that had to take place, some, some of those workshops going, you know, 90 minutes, some of them only going 45, so there was a lot of movement, but from what we heard and from the feedback we got from the practice was, it was the, probably, the best testing situation that we've, we've had in, in the years we've been doing it. So, again, I know Mr. McHugh's going to be here tonight speaking, so I just wanted to publicly thank him for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Mr. Mayor, if we could, I would ask if we could take out of order the introduction of our newly-appointed Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Christopher Lord, and ask Ms. Murtagh if she would introduce him.
No objection. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Christopher Lord. Currently, he's the principal of the Leominster High School, where he ended a five-year decline in MCAS performance, his AP scores exceeded the state and national averages for the first time in over five years. He was formerly a principal at Andover High School and Shea High School in Pennsylkill, Rhode Island. He has worked with a variety of high-performance teams to establish really innovative and exciting programs to improve student achievement and better prepare them for the future. I look forward to working with Dr. Lord as we continue to move the PBD public schools forward. I welcome him to our team, and I can't wait to introduce you to our teachers, and for you to meet our wonderful students. So this is Dr. Christopher Lord.
Thank you. First thing I have to know, John, do I have to change my name to Jared? There's so many Jareds here. My goodness. Yes, nice to meet you all. Go ahead, I've been doing interviews here for the last, what, three months. Any questions? I mean, I'm delighted to be here, all kinds of things are connecting and falling into place on so many levels. For me, I mean, I don't know if you know what you have here, I've worked in a lot of districts here, Kara and I have had more conversations in the last three months than I've had with many of the supervisors, I've already had issues of substance, she and I just start our conversations, and then we have to end them, because usually one of you walks into the office and interrupts us. So, or somebody walks into my office and interrupts us, but she and I have an instant connection, so she's been just great to connect with, I'm hoping we can continue that relationship. Great elementary schools, very strong. In this building, I mean, you've made an incredible commitment to what I think is probably the most important age group for the development of young people, and I mean, the commitment of your community in constructing this middle school is great. I have been in a lot of high schools, I'm a member of the NEAC Commission, I credit 60 high schools on my team, there's about 600 high schools in New England, and we talk about you behind your back all the time. And anyway, I've learned an awful lot of great things, I've worked with a lot of great people all over New England, I'm hoping to be a resource for your community to take your schools to the next level, and, you know, thank you for having me. Do you have any questions?
Well, your credentials are excellent, I think your strengths really fit well into what we're looking to do, and very happy to have you on board.
Yeah, sure.
Looking forward to working with you. Anybody would like to, Mrs. Doc?
Welcome, Dr. Lord.
Thank you. Chris, please. Dr. Lord was my name.
Okay. I just wanted to tell you that reading your resume was, it was a wonderful experience because so many of the things that you've done in the past are things that we've talked about doing or are being planned for the near future. So, it, it was great to see what your experience has been, so you're definitely going to be, everybody's going to be talking to you a lot.
Sure, I mean, that'd be great. I mean, I, I've studied, you have a great website, by the way, one of the best, you really did a nice job putting that together, it's excellent. And I've got a mnemonic that I wanted to share with you that helps me remember all of your, all of your elementary schools. Your high school colors are blue, blue and white, correct? So I come up with, "Big blue courageous children make a strong wonderful world." That helps me remember your elementary schools. Big and Blue is Brown and Burke, Courageous Children is Center and Carroll Streets, McCarthy- McCarthy is Making, and Strong Wonderful World is Southwest and Welch. And I've remembered a little bit about each one of them, your elementary schools. I've looked at all your data online, very strong. They're better than the state in almost every case. So your elementary schools are performing really well. I imagine that's no doubt due to Kara's leadership. Your middle school, you've already made a commitment here, and you're right. I love working in high schools. I've been in high schools for the last 25 years in many, many settings, and I've worked with some wonderful people. And I've read about many of you already. Curious to see how the projects come through for, I think it was Center School, and there was another one that you were, yeah, Welch School. And did the same architects build Welch and, is it not Brown, is it Burke School? They look very much the same. It looks like they had the same.
And McCarthy too.
Yeah, very good, yeah. Efficient thinking, that was good. Yeah, so yeah, I've worked with some high schools that I think would be of value. I have been involved in education reform in a number of ways. I learned a long time ago that, you know, I just want to listen and get to know people here and figure out what it is that I can do to help support you. You have to push back on me a little bit because sometimes I push pretty hard. That was one of my faults, but I'm trying to, you know, as I age, I get a little bit better at finding out what people need and offering those supports that I can to make them happen. I've seen some really exciting things going on in high schools. When I was in Rhode Island, we did the graduation portfolio presentations where all the seniors did a presentation in May of their senior year to a panel of judges, not unlike this. They would present, just like I'm presenting to you, their four years' worth of learning and what they did to become a learner in that particular setting, and it was a requirement for their diploma. The entire state of Rhode Island was part of that. That was a really exciting thing. I don't know if that's something of interest to you, but that was a lot of fun for us. I've done master scheduling for 40 high schools. I don't know how your contract things are going, but I understand you want to look at a new schedule for your high school. There've been some really innovative things going on in master scheduling and how people use the school day in high schools all over. I've got many contacts. I'm hoping people would be interested in visiting some of these schools and seeing if some of those things might work for PBD High. MCAS, I'm finding that it's just getting your arms around the most needy groups in a high school setting. At least that's what seemed to work really well in Leominster over the last few years. We set up common planning time within our school schedule to get our arms around the most needy kids. And teams of teachers just stepped up and helped out, and they did really well with it. So I'm hoping we can mirror some of that stuff here. You know, it's kind of lengthy answer to your question, but yes, I've been connected with some things, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, Jared, welcome. It's nice to have you.
I like you, all right.
Thank you. You do have incredible credentials. Your resume is quite impressive. I know we all, as a committee and the administration, look forward to working with you. I know the staff is excited. So we're looking to hit the ground running once.
Sure. Whatever you need, just ask. I'll do what I can.
Thanks.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sure. All set? Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks you too.
Can we?
Okay, we'll go back to the agenda. Next item is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes on March 27, 2018.
Second, and I would like to add that the minutes in our packet needed to be reprinted. You have a new set handed out just this evening. It was missing a motion. It got cut off in production. So this is the minutes that we will be voting on are these. There was just one addition of a motion. It was the motion on, oh my goodness, preschool tuition. It was cut off at the bottom of the page.
Motion made by Mr. Hawkman for approval of the March 27, 2018 Regular School Committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any questions? Not hearing any. Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May we take Mr. McHugh out of turn? Is that okay?
Sure. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Come on up.
Steve, you have that folder? So I made a little flyer as part of the presentation that Steve hasn't a folder that ever been, pass around a copy for everybody. So I came here in, I believe it was December, to pitch the idea of a civics course, but it was more than just a civics course, and it was more about really putting it together and being experiential learning as part of the course. And so just as an overview on just what the course is all about is on the front of the flyer. We developed with the team, we kind of settled down on, let's make this, we wanted it all along for the seniors. And so we settled on an honors level and a full-year course, and just to start the first year with a cap of 20 seats, see how that goes. So the course, again, is really about students engaging in civics. It's not just sitting in a classroom and listening to lectures. So part of that is that we want them to go out and experience things on the federal level, state level, local level. And so the whole big picture is all, that's all incorporated into that. So I'm here for kind of to overview this again tonight and to propose a budget for the course, do the really big things that we're looking to do as part of it. So if you want to draw your attention to the second page, just to, just to get another overview about the resources in the course, it isn't just, again, in the classroom, you know, have a typical classroom, but it, you know, will be things with, you know, the books and lecture and activities. But also, one of the key things is to bring in people as a guest speaker series so that they'll get a real sense of civic life and government from the people that are living it, coming into the classroom. On the other hand, we will be going out of the classroom as well, so the experiential learning there will be to do several day trips or planning approximately 10. And things like, you know, State House, City Hall, and the Kennedy Institute for the Senate, and many other venues. Actually, right now, I usually take the AP Government class every January to the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast, and they're nice enough to sponsor the students. And so that's something I like to incorporate into this course as well, because it's a really great experience we've been doing. Get the kids involved in this class with Student Government Day. The kids we hear earlier mentioned about the Massachusetts Student Government Day, we can bring two students that, unfortunately, we can't bring 20, but still, it's a really great experience. And the big piece of this is the Capstone. It's have a, the plan, a week-long field experience through the Close Up Foundation is to do a trip to DC. I did meet with them and chose a week, tried to pick a week in the middle of March, so right before any of the big spring events. I looked back on the events calendar from the high school last three years, and that was the slowest week. And it's right before spring sports begins. There's really, once in a while, there might be like a Drama Fest competition if they move on that week, but really shouldn't interfere with too many other things. I met with Close Up, got a quote on that, how much that would cost for the trip, everything from the, you know, what the tuition is to the safety and everything else. So if you'd like on your own, if you want to look over the curriculum outline, I'll leave you with that. And really what I wanted to get to here tonight was, was the funding request for this. And I have it here in a chart. Total looking for, it was, as the estimates I had was 30,720. I have it broken down in the bottom. A big chunk of that is for the DC trip, but we had other things, so like bus transportation for local, for the local day trips. There's rather small items. Close Up has two curriculums that are actually not just valid for this course, but many social studies courses at the high school, especially the current events classes. Looking at some books and trying to get a book that's really relative and is more and more recent times to politics. One we actually looked at was one, I don't know if some of you might have read it, or is it even worse than it looks? And it's about the extreme partisanship that's grown in Washington. And we're thinking about, that would be a nice thing to have is to really, you know, as part of the course, read that and really explore that and how did we get to where we are today? And again, that's a major part of the course that we're going to start off with as well is about civil discourse and trying to get everybody to deliberate on everything, listen, and then really hone those debating skills. So this is the proposal as it's broken down. It's, like I said, mostly the DC trip. Students will be responsible on their own for the room and board and the, it's kind of cut off here, but it's an in-town transportation charge. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll open it up for Dr. Levine.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we are way ahead of the curve, I think, both at the federal and certainly at the state level. I believe civics will be mandated shortly as part of the high school curriculum. We're ahead of the curve here. And what I would ask you to do, you don't have to adopt this tonight if you don't want to, it's up to you, but what I would ask you to do is at least look at this through the budget process because there is a budget hidden here. So you may want to wait until you see the entire budget. But this curriculum is important, especially at this time in our country's life. And I can't tell you how much I support the work that Ken and his people have done in getting this civics curriculum into our high school so that our kids have a close-up, and I don't mean to use a pun, but a close-up view of how our country works and how our government works. I was part of the Close Up Foundation when I was a kid and went to DC. And I think of all the experiences that I've had in my life, especially when I was young, one of the things that I remember most is the visit to the Supreme Court, which was in session at the time. It is astounding. It's striking. I can't use enough adjectives to describe what it feels like to be in the highest court in the land in this country. And to have done it through a curriculum that was presented to me, an opportunity that was presented to me in high school. So our kids deserve this. Our kids deserve a shot at this. And I think we have an obligation, to tell you the truth, a moral obligation, to make certain that our kids are as experienced as possible in the interweaving and interworkings of our political system.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Open it up to the committee members. Mr. Hawkman? Yeah, thank you. Well said, Dr. Levine. I also participated in the Close Up Foundation when I was in high school. And you more than adequately described the value and the benefits that students receive from the program. Thank you, Mr. McHugh, for putting this together. Thank you for the detail in which you provided to us for this program. We could take this a few, to my committee members, to the chair, we could take this a few ways. We can hold off and talk about it during the budget. I'm prepared to make a motion to approve it now because I think that it is valuable enough and the cost is minimal enough in the scheme of our budget where we can find $30,000-plus to do this. But I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'll let yield the floor to my committee members. Thank you, Mr. Hawkman. Mr. Aronosis?
Well, I'm thrilled about this, as I'm sure you can guess. This is, you know, in a time where you really can't avoid government, and I don't think it's a bad thing that you can't, but I think educating our young people as well as you can in hands-on experience is the best thing. And I know we've had discussions about this course recently, but just a quick question. I know it's an honors-level course, and that's great. Now, is it replacing any other type of courses that you have right now, or is it an addition to?
No, this is addition to the offerings we already have. We do currently have a course. It's a semester elective, it's unleveled, and it's, it's called American Politics and Leaders. And it's, you know, it's a very basic civics class, but it's been very, run very infrequently over the last few years. So I think this is definitely much more enticing of a curriculum than that.
And on Mr. Hawkman's point, I completely agree that we might as well just go ahead and move forward with it tonight if everyone agrees with that. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aronosis. Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. This is a great presentation. This is very exciting to me. I feel like, though, I'm walking in a window and I want to buy something right away. I just, I would recommend that we maybe just take a look at this when we have budget discussions. That just would be my feeling, just I want to make sure that, that we know exactly where everything's going. That would just make me more comfortable. Even though I'm like, you know, I'm excited, this is great, but like I said, I'd like to just kind of take it as part of the whole process, budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Meeke. Mr. Libby.
Mr. Meeke? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. Thank you for doing this. This is a great opportunity for our kids and for our high school. At our last meeting, I had mentioned how we need to make field trips more affordable for students because those are the things that they remember. Dr. Levine remembered his field trip to DC about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
So I would go ahead and want to move forward with this, but at will of the committee, I'll do what you want, you guys want to do as well. If there isn't money in the budget, I would offer us to help out in any other way, whether it's fundraising to get the students there, but I hope we can get it through the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Meeke. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McHugh. This is a great program. Could you tell me, what would be a prerequisite for a student to get into that class? Are there any requirements?
There's no prerequisite, just on their own selection.
Okay. And as far as the work, sorry, oh, like the activities with Student Government Day and Massachusetts Student Government Day, how would the students in this, how would that, or would it change anything? Is it just an expectation that these students would participate in those activities? Or would they be mandated to run for office in those, for those to?
So our thinking was for the PBD Student Government, that the students in this class would be putting their names on the ballot for a position for the Student Government Day in PBD. The Massachusetts one, there's only two seats. So I don't know how we would determine that one right now, but it's.
But they would, they would at least have to.
I think they would be very interested in that opportunity.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, anyone interested in this, this is great things. Through the chair to Dr. Levine, do we, do we have a date, or potential date, when civics is going to become mandatory? I know it's definitely moving forward.
Through the chair, they're still discussing it, whether or not it happens this year. Andrew might be able to.
Yeah, I can speak to that if you want me to. We got to drop off today, actually, about it, so I can speak to it. It is in committee right now. It's been filed. It's one of the big-ticket items, to say the least, that is, as we get towards the end of the legislative session, that I think is going to come down the pike. So we are on the forefront of things doing this, but I think it might be a matter of months if you look at the direction the wind's going. It's probably going to happen.
Through the chair and Mrs. Dunn, do you know whether or not some funding, support funding, will come with that mandate?
Off the top of my head, I can't speak to it. I would, I, yeah, I can't speak to that.
So the answer is no.
From the state, it usually is. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I too, I mean, this is a great program. I want to move forward with it. But as far as the money, I really do need to look at it in conjunction with our budget discussions. But it sounds wonderful for the students.
Mr. Hawkman? Yeah, if I may, if everyone's done, if I may at this point make a motion to adopt the PBD Veterans Moral High School Civics proposal presented by Mr. McHugh, subject to funding through our budget process.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkman, for the motion. Seconded by Mr. Aronosis. Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a comment about the hard work that Mr. McHugh has put in coordinating this with his group and reiterate the amount of hours that he's spent on this new MCAS schedule. It's benefited our kids tremendously, and I could ask a little bit, so thank you for all the work that he did, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
No, no. If I may at this time, I think Mr. Boo is here on a, are you here on an agenda item, Mr. Boo?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we take Mr. Boo out?
Absolutely. Very quick, bud. So, Mr. Boo is going to explain to you that we have the opportunity to run a co-op program in one of our sports that is lowly involved by itself, but will run as a co-op. And we do have the right through the MIAA to do this. and we do have the right through the MIAA to do this. But for the future, the reason I asked Mr. Boo to be here is because I believe that this is one of those areas that is a school committee vote necessary. It's a policy, it's a policy decision. Folks need to decide at this level whether or not you want a co-op program. So that's why I've asked Mr. Boo to be here and explain it. Go ahead, Boo.
Sure. Thank you. Looking to co-op with our boys tennis program. This is a program that we actually did not run last year due to lack of numbers, and, you know, this would give an opportunity for us to have a boys tennis program, which we did not have last year. Just kind of looking at it, to run a program successfully, you need, at a minimum, seven players. That would be your three singles, two doubles, that's what you need to be able to run. When we went through the process, we had five kids that signed up to participate. We did reach out to try to get a middle school waiver, we did have an interest in, from two kids that play at the middle school, to come up and play. Still didn't have enough to fund a team. Danvers had two returning starters, they reached out to me saying, "I don't know what we're going to get for numbers. You know, your five, my two, would at least make seven." You know, they've had six players come up for their, for their team. So right now, we're looking at 11 players that would allow us to run our boys tennis program. So that's kind of where we stand right now.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the co-op boys tennis program with Danvers for this coming year.
Motion to follow the recommendation, Mr. Superintendent. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call, on the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Question, does it, does it become a PBD team or a Danvers team?
We would be the, it would be a PBD team.
Okay. Thank you.
First question, Mrs. Dunn.
Always got to check on that.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it being here.
No problem.
Let's go to a couple of quick items here. Approval of bills. Motion to approve Warrant A number 3770, in the amount of $141,482.64, subject to audit. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio, for approval of Warrant A number 3770. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Warrant B number 3774, in the amount of $486,873.89, subject to audit. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of Warrant B, number 3774, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
We have a parent who's been patiently waiting to get up to public participation, and we have had a number of people come for her, so I would ask, could we go to public participation now before Mrs. Dunn gives her update?
No objection, please. Yeah, right at the microphone. Welcome, if we could just please state your name and address.
Amanda Fugel, 23 North End Street.
A little bit closer to the microphone if you want to keep that.
Amanda Fugel, 23 North End Street.
Well, welcome, Amanda, please.
So I'm a parent of a kindergarten, obviously at the parent's school. And this is the second time in two weeks that she's came to me, and said that she's scared in her class because of an outburst of another kid. And to have your five-year-old come to you and tell you that she's scared, I'm sorry, that she's scared because we don't know what's going on with our kids. And there is a, I can't say a name or anything, but there is a kid who is, that they need to evacuate the class for, but we don't know how to talk to our kids if we don't know what's going on. And there's a group of parents that can't be here because we didn't know that this meeting existed until a couple hours ago. And we just want some sort of notice of how we can deal with the problems that our kids are having in class. So if there's a kid who needs a little extra help, not saying exactly what he needs, but if there are outbursts, we need to talk to our kids about how to deal with that, and how you need to walk away, and that when he's feeling okay, you can go and play with him, or any other situation.
Well, thank you, Dr. Levine.
Yeah, we're happy to, we've looked into the situation, we knew that you were coming tonight, and we knew that you had this concern. We'll see what we can do to do a better job in communicating to parents who have your same concern. There's a legitimate concern that you brought up, we'll take a look at it over the next few days.
I know it's different from hearing it from a parent or a teacher, but I mean, from a kid, you don't know if it's worse or less than it really is.
Yeah.
We just want to know how to deal with our kids.
Amanda, very good point. Let us, yeah, let us work on that and get some information to you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It hurts me really bad that my kid is scared.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, well said, thank you.
You will be here for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the MSBA Higgins Project?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Our monthly meeting will be taking place this Thursday at 3:45 in the lower conference room at City Hall. Some of the agenda items will be discussion of irrigation, the landscaping warranties, the punch list, safety concerns, and any other items that are possibly before us.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and thank you for your continued work on that, on that committee.
You're welcome.
You know, the building is open, things are going well, but there's still a lot of things taking place, and I appreciate you keeping an eye on, making sure that these final pieces to the puzzle are complete, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Hockman?
On that subject, Ms. Dunn, last night there was a Yoma Showa program here at the middle school in the auditorium, and I cannot tell you how many people came up to me and complimented me on the, on this beautiful building in the auditorium, and I deflected that compliments to you, because you really have done a wonderful job, and the time commitment that you've exhibited and put into the construction of this building is really unprecedented, I think, in this city, and you deserve a lot of credit for it, so thank you.
Thank you very much, but honestly, there are so many people involved in this, it's been a huge, extremely interesting project. It's been a lot of fun, but there are hundreds of people who've helped make it possible.
Very true, and, you know, a lot of it was the fun stuff, to get to the point of opening the building and seeing our students enjoy the building, but there is, you know, a lot of that tedious final work that has to be done, and it's great, again, to have your eyes on top of that work.
Mr. Miko's smiling because he knows, we came walking in the corridor, and I'm, I'm stomping on a couple of things and checking, and I said, "I cannot walk in this building like a normal person." I'm looking at things that are so totally different, and it really does change your perspective when you, you know, when you saw it, when it was really, you know, a hole in the ground, and then you're checking things out because it's going to be fixed, this needs to be looked at, what's this? You know, it's, it's really changed a lot of my viewpoint on, on schools. Moving furniture, things like that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
I also just want to echo what you had said through the chair. Mrs. Dunn, this goes way back when this building was even just the idea. I remember you came by my house, and I was just a resident on James Street, and we walked down the street, and you listened to my concerns about this huge building that was going to be built right next door to my house, but I just want to echo what everyone else said, you've done, you've done a great job, you're doing a great job, and thank you for this.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Excellent, so we'll go back, I know we started, but Dr. Levine, turn over to you for the remainder of the superintendent's report.
Thank you, just one more item, and that is the Healy Bus Contract. I will turn this over to Jared Stanton, who has taken on the responsibility of renegotiating the contract, and we have a recommendation for you. So, Mr. Stanton?
Through the chair. In your packets, you see a memo from Healy Bus Contract for the two, two extension years. The committee agreed three years ago to do a six in the sixth, but I was able to negotiate a 3% increase next year, as well as a 6%, keep the 6% for year five. Because the contract is changing, that would require a revote, by having this 3% decrease is roughly a savings of $35,000 to $40,000. If we were to go back out to bid, I do not think that we would get anything close to this, so my recommendation would be to accept these two extension years.
And through the chair, there is your money to pay for the civics program.
Any thoughts or comments to Mr. Stanton? Mrs. Dunn?
I'd just like to make a motion that the school committee approve the two terms as prepared for us this evening on the school bus contract, so we'll...
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Stanton, thank you so much for your efforts here. Your, your work is appreciated, and the savings that you provided to us are certainly needed in this budget cycle. With regard to the, it appears that the information that was provided indicates the increases that are going to exist in this contract for years, five, four and five, but this doesn't lock us in to the number of buses that we may need. Is that correct?
That is correct. Currently, we have 22 buses.
Right, so this is just the price per bus, essentially?
Correct. That's why this is the format, that it's not a price, it's a price per bus.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Dr. Levine, for your report. Written communications, none in today's packet. Subcommittee reports. Let's start off education. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The education subcommittee is planning on meeting on April 23rd here at the Higgins, probably at 6 o'clock. We will post in the regular course. At that meeting, among other things, we'll talk about a curriculum for tolerance and inclusion at the Higgins Middle School in particular, and perhaps throughout the district. While I have the floor, if I may, make two announcements unrelated to my subcommittee. The PBD Little League invites all committee members to its opening day parade, April 29th. The parade kicks off here at the Higgins, and we'll walk around to James Street. And the PBD Education Foundation wants to announce that invitations will be going out for the Legacy Award Dinner, which will be taking place May 17th at City Hall.
And with the announcements, I would like to add that we're having a PBD Pride Cleanup Day, and that is Saturday, May 5th. We'll be getting notices out, but certainly after the storms and the winter weather, we are in the midst of a extensive cleanup in the city, and certainly we could use a lot of help on May 5th, if anybody's able to come and join us. We'll be meeting at City Hall at 9:00 AM and dispersing throughout the city, but a lot of work to do, so hopefully you're able to join us. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee?
We're currently announcing negotiations.
Great, thank you, Mr. Olympio. School Safety, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and Wellness, we will hold that to the next meeting. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time.
City Council and Advisory Board Liaison, Mrs. Dunn?
The Parent Advisory Board meeting for April will be posted for April 23rd. It'll be at 7 o'clock, probably here at the Higgins, and the topic will be precipitation removal. I'm not even going to say, just leave it at precipitation removal. Every time we have this meeting, a couple days later.
Am I missing something?
Yeah, it's going right over your head.
Okay. Sorry, Mrs. Dunn, usually I'm on the same wavelength, but I appreciate you not saying that awful four-letter word.
Exactly, exactly.
Snow, just so people know. Thank you. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With our scheduling of, we're in negotiations, budget season coming, I'd like to sneak one in there if we could, but I'll get back to you on that.
Great, thank you. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
I would like to say, last Friday, this is the kind of, you know, stuff that I like to hear that's going on in the district, that I'd like to publicly thank Ms. Peacock and Ms. Connors, who's a third grade, my CJ's third grade teacher at the Burke School. She invited my son, Andrew, who's going to be going to kindergarten next year, to their classroom, because my CJ talks about his younger brother all the time, who has autism. So she invited my Andrew, my wife, actually, I couldn't make it, but they went and visited CJ's third grade classroom. And CJ, basically in front of all his classmates, was talking about his younger brother, and how he has autism, and what it's like to have a younger brother with autism. And it was just a wonderful experience. My wife said, and she said that the kids were wonderful, they were asking really good questions, respectful questions. My son, you know, with the autism, he does a lot of stimming with his hands, and, you know, it was just good awareness that was, again, I think not enough of it is, you know, throughout the district, you know, it's all centered, seems like, down at Burke School. And I just thought, I really appreciated Ms. Connors extending that invitation, and really Ms. Peacock, too, was more than okay with it. It was just a great, my wife called me up, and she was in tears, she was happy, but just the whole experience, and I think it'd be nice to see more classrooms through the district, just, you know, it was a 15, 20-minute present, not a presentation, but it was just a 15, 20-minute visit, and it really, I think, you know, was helpful for the, for the kids in the classroom, so it was just a wonderful experience, and I just want to thank that Burke School really put in on that.
Great.
And with that, I'll be scheduling a meeting probably in the next few weeks.
Mr. Olympio, thank you for sharing that story with us, and I know Mrs. Connors, my daughter's had her as well, she's a wonderful teacher, and thank you for sharing that. Okay, new business, items from next agenda will be handled in the regular course. Entertainer motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.